To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. We need to start with a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that?
Sure. Councilmember Sellers is excused, but we do have a quorum.
Excellent, thank you. We have an agenda in front of us. Any changes to consider at that agenda? If there are none, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling? Motion is there, excuse me, is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Schmidt, seconding. Any discussion on the motion? If there is not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? We have an agenda. We have the city council minutes for November 4th. Questions, comments, concerns regarding those minutes? If not, we will acknowledge those as they've been prepared and we will go to the bills. Any questions, comments on the bills?
I have one question here.
Yes, sir.
On the, uh, I was just, the question is on the concrete conservation. I'm just wondering what that, what that is.
That is epoxy lighting we did on manholes will do about a dozen from here. There's some concrete in manholes so that you can prevent the corrosion and to stop it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Excellent. Any further questions?
There's just got a couple of big ones. A hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two for vehicles and ninety-five thousand, seventy-four for landfill fees.
Sure.
Um, just pointing that out for the record, putting that on there. What are those for?
Do you have a question?
What are they for?
Okay. Chief, go ahead and...
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hagman. That is, uh, our truck probably came in and we ordered back and made and that's what that angle was for.
Mr. Robinson.
These are normal fees and paying all the time for to take those.
Excellent. Any further questions? We've been waiting on those vehicles for ta- about...
Since May.
I was thinking we waited even since before then, but...
I thought COVID was over.
We bought them locally, that's the important thing.
Yes, that's it, yeah, that's a good thing to point out.
Thank you.
Mr. Welling, that's excellent, yes.
Well, on that, did you get them equipped and ready to go or is this still in the process?
No, now we're, uh, Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, we're stuck right now because they changed some designs to the vehicle and unfortunately they don't like the cage of that vehicle. So we're waiting for a change to manufacture some vehicles. They're just basically sitting right now waiting for the parts they put together. Or put all the stuff into right now and then put the cage in later, they're gonna take a lot of stuff out and really drive to the other car. So we're kinda stuck a little bit.
Gotcha.
Is there a mo- is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Perks? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lynn, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? Takes care of the bills. Council comments. Ms. Hagman, let's start down here, since you're all by yourself on the far end, what's on your mind tonight?
Um, well, first and foremost, happy birthday to coun- fellow councilmember Mike Sellers. The reason he is out is because his beautiful family took him to dinner and so glad for him and happy birthday and thank you for all the years that you've, um, you've been on council and for public service and we appreciate you for when you watch this later. Happy birthday. And the other thing is, this is a hard time for a lot of families. We're gearing up towards Thanksgiving. There's so many things, when we say hard times, that everyone should keep in mind, the stress of finances, especially with the economy and the way things have gone down and then you amplify that with, um, uh, you know, seniors, loneliness, veterans. It increases, um, uh, the potential for things that we really don't want to hear about and then the losses that we don't want to hear about. So reach out to your neighbor and try, I'm an introvert, believe it or not. I mean, I, I, uh, people would not expect that of me. I, I'm perfectly, um, fine at home in my house alone 24/7 if I could be. So, but it's important to reach out, knock on doors and just extend yourself a little bit this time of year because you never know when somebody really needs a hand and a little light and a little smile.
Mr. Welling?
Amen to what councilperson Hagman said about loneliness and, uh, we're doing a food drive at our, our office, so if you want to bring food out to the workforce center, bring some. Uh, we'll get it to the Lord's Storehouse at the end of the month. But, uh, other than that, uh, winter kinda teased us there on Monday. Wasn't ready for it, but, uh, yeah, it's about it.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Perks?
Yeah, I'll say happy birthday to Mr. Sellers also. Other than that, it, uh, I was in Cokeville on Monday and winter started early there. Had a boatload, so. Glad we didn't.
Lynn?
Um, echo happy birthday to Mike as well. Hopefully he's having a good time and, um, I wanted to echo what you guys have said as far as, you know, please reach out to those people in need. Thanksgiving is my favorite holiday of the year. Most people think it's Christmas or, you know, Valentine's Day or whatever else, but Thanksgiving is the only holiday that I think is not completely commercialized. It's all about giving thanks, spending time with your family, spending time with friends. I'm extremely blessed in my life. I got an amazing wife, I got amazing kids, I got an amazing family. So for those people that, uh, aren't as privileged, please reach out, help those in need over the holiday and, uh, make sure you give thanks.
Mr. Schmidt?
Uh, same. I'd like to, uh, wish Mike happy birthday and also remind everybody that this weekend is, I know Christmas is a ways off, but not that far. The days seem like they're going pretty fast, so I know the 21st and 2nd is the, um, Santa's workshop and I hope everybody helps out the local businesses and, uh, support them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, I, I guess I can just simply say amen to all of that and, hey, I, I agree and we will move on. We do have some public hearings to hold. Mr. Harris, will you help us with that?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I am Mark Harris, I'm the Evanston City Attorney. There are three hearings tonight. The purpose of the hearings is for the city council to receive evidence regarding the following applications. The issuance of a restaurant license for Carnitas Michoacan Mexican Restaurant LLC, DBA Carnitas Michoacan for the building located at 123 10th Street, Evanston, Uena County, Wyoming. Number two, the transfer of ownership of a retail liquor license from WHR Gateway LLC, DBA Gateway Liquors to Wyoming Horse Racing, DBA Horse Palace. And, three, the issuance of a micro brewery permit, on off, on and off premise bar and package store for Shades of Pale Ink, DBA Shades Brewing for the building located at 1512, Unit 4 is the way it's described, Main Street, Evanston, Uena County, Wyoming. The applications for issuance or transfer of ownership have been reviewed by the city clerk's office and the staff of the Wyoming Liquor Commission. No application approved by the city council will be issued until all the requirements of the liquor commission have been met. Notice of the applications have been published in a newspaper of local circulation once a week for two consecutive weeks. Anyone present who wishes to speak to the council regarding the applications should approach the podium, state your name and mailing address and present any comments. No one will be cross-examined, but those who approach the podium may be asked questions by members of the council. The issues in the hearing are set forth in section 4-9 of the city code which provides, "A license or permit shall not be issued, renewed, or transferred if the city council finds from evidence presented at the hearing, one, the welfare of the people residing in the vicinity of the proposed license or permit premises shall be adversely and seriously affected; two, the purpose of this chapter shall not be carried out by issuance, renewal, or transfer of the license or permit; three, the number, type, or location of existing licenses meets the needs of the vicinity under consideration; four, the desires of the residents of the city will not be met or satisfied by the issuance, renewal, or transfer of the license or permit; or five, any other reasonable restriction or standard which may be imposed by the city council shall not be carried out by issuance, renewal, or transfer of the license or permit." Mr. Mayor, should we, uh, take the hearings just in the order that I mentioned and then at the end of each hearing, uh, take a motion on that particular license application?
That would work.
Go to the next one?
That would work, yes, I think. That'd be fine.
I think we have to vote on them separately for various reasons, but, um, all right. So the first application is the restaurant license for Carnitas Michoacan Restaurant, Mexican Restaurant, 123 10th Street, Evanston, Uena County, Wyoming. Is there anyone present who wishes to testify or present comments to the council regarding this license? This is a restaurant license at, you can consider it a new location and the clerk has reviewed that license and sent the license for review by the liquor commission. Anyone present who wishes to make any comment regarding this particular application or a restaurant license? Those are unlimited in number. Anyone wishing to make any comments? Council have any questions for anyone about the license?
The only question I had, the 123 10th Street, is that, is that like where, uh...
It's the ba- where R and R was.
Yes, I was trying to think of, I was, actually, I was thinking Sorellas, but I thought that was a long time ago.
Well, that's what it was.
It's a long time ago.
Long time ago.
Okay. I knew that was...
That's the underneath.
Yes, okay.
In the, is it the Star Hotel Building? It's not what it's called, I think.
The Waldemar?
That's where it is.
Yeah, okay.
It's a new, it's a new license.
Sounds great.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Harris. Uh, is, is this a previous business? I mean, is this a new business or have they moved from another location?
I think they've been open for a while. Now they just want a liquor license.
But I think they're new to our community, right?
She, she worked at Don Pedro's and moved to Ogden and she's since moved back. We've been there a couple of times, it's great food, great prices, so...
It's been open for a while though, then it's someone downstairs, right?
Yeah.
They've had the restaurant open, I think that's what the clerk said, for a while. They're just now getting their, their application for the liquor license.
So it's an established business?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
Not that I, anybody else?
Nope.
There are no other questions from the council, the hearing on this particular application will be closed. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so now we just need to act on this, a motion to approve this, um, application?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there somebody, I'll entertain a motion to that effect. I don't wanna, how to pronounce Carnitas, how'd you say it?
Michoacan.
Michoacan. Somebody would like to, uh, make a motion to approve this application?
Only if you say that one more time.
I'll try.
I'll make that motion to that effect.
He's gonna make the motion, he's not gonna hold me.
I'll second.
Mr. Lynn, seconding. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I will be honest, before you vote, I, I had to ask Martha how to pronounce it. I'm still not getting it right. I think she said Michoacan.
Michoacan.
And it's a province or state.
Oh.
In Mexico, which we looked up and, you know, always Google's never wrong.
Right.
It's supposed to be the birthplace of the carnita.
Oh.
Whatever.
Nice.
Yeah.
Well, I...
Now we know.
I hope it's a crazy success for them, we'll have to go check it out. I have not been there for a while, so I will go check this out. They have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That is approved.
The next hearing, Your Honor, is a transfer of ownership of a retail liquor license from WHR Gateway LLC, DBA Gateway Liquors to Wyoming Horse Racing, DBA Horse Palace. Uh, this is a course for the Horse Palace that is soon to be completed out on Prospector Drive. This is a transfer of ownership, uh, that will put the ownership into Wyoming Horse Racing, DBA the Horse Palace. Is there anyone present who wishes to provide comments to the council on this application? Anyone present who wishes to provide comments? Any questions from the council?
I have none on this one, anybody else?
It's pretty straightforward.
You think we know?
There being no questions from the council, the hearing on this application will be closed. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve this application for transfer to ownership.
I'll make a motion, Your Honor, to transfer the ownership.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Perk, seconding. Is there any discussion on the motion?
So we're clear, this is the one we kinda did a work through, they've transferred it, now we're transferring it back?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lynn, that is absolutely correct.
Okay. I think you were the one that said I don't like doing that necessarily, but I think it's gonna be a good business once they get it open, so I'm excited for them to get that building open. And the Dunkin' Donuts, it's supposed to be in there.
Absolutely. Can't turn that, man, can't fault that. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved as well. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. The third and final hearing is a hearing to solicit comment regarding the application for a micro brewery permit, an on and off premise bar and package store to Shades of Pale, DBA Shades Brewing for the building located at 1512 Main Street in, describes as uniform, Evanston, Uena County, Wyoming. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this application? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this application? Any question from the council?
I have one question, please, um, is, this is the one that's in our roundhouse, is this the same location?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if it was something that was moving or...
Are they open functioning yet?
They're on the way. They're building their level.
Okay. Any dates that's projected?
Two, one, uh, next year.
I'm sorry?
First quarter of next year. First part of the year. Yeah.
Do they still want to do some sort of festivity when they get that open?
Sure.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll answer. Okay, the hearing on this application will be closed. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve this application for a micro brewery permit for Shades of, Shades of Pale.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Lynn, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That is approved. Those three, those three, uh, applications, to be real honest, these are, these are new businesses and I'm always appreciative of new business coming to town and honestly taking the chance to invest in our community and I hope they're all with great successes for them. We have no consent agenda or nor unfinished business, so we'll go to the new business there and we'll start with the consideration of a handgun sale. Chief Ranish?
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of council, unfortunately we're losing another officer due to retirement. Uh, he's been in law enforcement, this area for 21 years, met the city of Evanston in 19, Sergeant Sean Stoll, he's been the sergeant over Investigation Division, he's done an outstanding job, but he's ready to start collecting some retirement and go on and earn a second year. Uh, Lynn, the, uh, would like to purchase this handgun and going off the same numbers we've utilized, pulled, uh, Officer Conde Slogan, Officer Welling, who left this year, uh, to sell the handgun for $470, I'm asking the council to consider consideration for him.
Absolutely. We, we hate to miss him, but we wish him well and, uh, you know, Sean is, Sean has been an excellent member of our police force, a very respectable young man.
Matter of fact, Mr. Mayor, you first started working for, uh, Councilmember Welling there.
So did the chief.
That's true, too.
But, but we won't hold that against you or him.
I hired, I hired good people. Look where they're at now.
No wonder he's wore out at a young age.
It's good to see him succeed.
That's great, good for him, good for him. Is there a, a motion to approve this sale?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Perks?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Schmidt, seconding. Any discussion?
Wish him luck.
Absolutely.
Yes. Is there a retirement party or is he just gonna fade away?
Well, his last day's gonna be on the 5th, which is the, uh, winter meeting, so on the 4th, there will be one. Uh, you should be gave me an email, uh, down at the, I believe it's the Peman, from 12:00 to 1:30. Don't hold me that, I'll double check email.
Thank you.
Another question comes up with, how's your staffing if you got all these guys retiring?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, we are, now, we're actually fully staffed, not fully trained. Uh, we have one officer, Jessica Biller, who should be graduating academy the day before Thanksgiving and then I have two additional officers who send to the academy and with the Sergeant Stoll party, we'll have an opening one more.
Okay.
So we're getting a very young department.
That'll give me gray hair.
Yeah.
Or lose it like I did with you guys, so...
Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of selling this handgun, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Resolution 2572, Mr. Harris should read that title for us, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2572 is a resolution approving and authorizing the final plat for the Uena Senior Center addition, a subdivision within the city of Evanston, Wyoming, as more particularly described herein.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacobson?
Okay, uh, the, uh, Uena Senior Center addition, uh, it's, I think everyone kinda knows where the senior center's located, but it's just, uh, off of, uh, 12th Street, between there and 13th in West Uena and you have, uh, 12th and 13th, uh, to the north. Anyway, it's the highlighted area on the map. What's, uh, being proposed, uh, currently, you have lots 1 through 4 of, of the Hillcrest Park addition and also the adjusted lot 5 of the Hillcrest Park addition that is proposed, uh, within the subdivision. A two-lot subdivision is proposed and the purpose of this subdivision is to put each building, you, there is a, um, the former, former Memorial Hospital building located centered of, of, uh, building to the north, northwest and the senior center to the southeast part of the site. This subdivision, it proposes to place each building on its own lot and the purpose of that is to allow the sale of the former Memorial Hospital building. This is the plat that will, is proposed to be filed. I did add some colors so it'll make it easier to understand what's, uh, happening here. So, um, the Evanston Housing Authority has, uh, their building that's located outside the boundaries of this subdivision. That's the kind of lighter orange shade towards the, uh, top of the map. The buildings, um, the senior center building and the former hospital building is located within the orange shaded areas. The dark lines on the plat are showing as the subdivision boundary as well as the, uh, lot line boundaries between lot 1 and lot 2 of, of the senior center addition. Lot 1 has the Memorial Hospital and lot 2 has the senior center addition. The size of the lots, uh, uh, well, zoning for the property, it is zoned public. Uh, the minimum lot size requirement in a public zoning district is 6,000 square feet. Lot 1 with the senior center, um, uh, with the Memorial Hospital building, 16,681 square feet. Lot 2, the senior center building, that lot is 17,373 square feet, so the proposed lots, uh, comply with the minimum lot size requirements of the city code. Now, with, uh, the current conditions of this property, um, neither of these buildings meet current setback requirements. With this subdivision proposal, uh, it's not going to change anything, it's not going to increase any non-conforming condition with the building in terms of setbacks for the properties. Um, so it is considered a non-conforming, uh, structure on each of the lots. Those buildings can continue until such time that they cease to exist. Uh, there are a couple of items in the staff report, so no structure may be enlarged or altered in any way which increases the non-conformity, nothing's being proposed that would do that. And should a structure be destroyed by any means to an extent of more than 50% of its replacement costs, exclusive of the foundation, it shall not be reconstructed except in conformity with the requirements of the zoning district for which the structure's located. So, yeah, basically they are grandfathered in until such time, um, those changes occur. See, uh, it's... There, there is an access easement, that's showing on the plat and I don't know if you can see it from here, it is, uh, illustrated as a doorway access easement, uh, towards the lower portion of the plat. It is colored, uh, kind of a pink shade with a darker shade of pink running through an upper level of the buildings. Those access easements are provided to, um, provide access to the building as well as emergency access in and out of the buildings for each of the lots. There are existing landscape easements, um, uh, one, previously approved with an adjustment, adjusted boundary of lot 5. It's the one green space that's located, uh, just on the upper side to the left of the map, uh, which is carried over, um, to the proposed plat as shown on lot 1. An additional lawn maintenance easement shown on lot 2 of the proposed Uena Senior Center addition will allow the owner of lot 1, uh, to maintain the landscape improvements within the easement. Alterations within the land, uh, land, or lawn maintenance easement, uh, on the right side of the, uh, plan, um, shall require review and approval of the owners of lot Uh, the city, um, this, there is a city water and sewer services to each of these buildings, so nothing has to be added with the, uh, division of the buildings. Uh, with that, the city subdivision review committee has reviewed the proposal, uh, there is no concerns expressed by, and anyone, uh, with the city subdivision review committee. Staff recommends approval.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Jacobson? Before we move on, this seems, this is probably where you were born, wasn't it, David?
Yeah, I was. That's what I figured. So you're probably Mr. Harris, is there? I'm sorry?
I'm just trying to think of who all, who all in the room was born in this building.
Kim was.
A few, a few hands. Excellent, that's cool. That's really cool.
I have one question.
Please, go ahead, sir.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Maybe I didn't hear it, but you say, I, I see, reading this, that they, there's alterations with the maintenance easement for, uh, it shall require the approval of the owner of lot 2.
That's for the landscaped area in the green, just showing to the right on the map.
So that's been resolved?
Uh, yeah, they, they will be able, the, the property owners of lot 1 will be able to maintain that with the approval of the owners of lot 2.
Thank you.
Uh, so the one, the picture that you have, very first one, is not the one that we got in our packet, so these show what proposed. Go to the next one. That's, no, the pit, the other, the first picture, that one.
Yes.
That's where the current lot lines are at?
Those are the, uh, boundaries that's involved with the subdivision.
Those are just the boundaries?
Yeah. So...
What are the current ones?
The larger area that has the 1237 address, there are actually four lots involved with that piece.
Okay.
That's not illustrated there, and then you have the adjusted boundary of lot five, which is kinda the zigzag lot that you see on the top.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to get an idea of what it looks like currently before this gets approved, because that's not in here, so.
It's a little bit difficult to determine boundaries from that, I thought that might be a little bit...
Yeah, no, that one's great, that shows what you're proposing though, right? That shows what you're proposing, right?
That's basically what's proposed within the, the boundaries of the subdivision are the dark black lines illustrated on that.
And I was just curious where the current lot lines are.
The current lot lines are right here. So you've got lot one, it's lot line here, you've got a lot line here, so that's lot two, three, four, adjusted boundary, lot five.
So we've got lot lines that go right through the building, currently?
Yes. This subdivision will clean that up.
That's what I'm just saying, this is probably a good idea to clean this up, is what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, it's more simple. The underlying subdivision...
Not a whole lot you can do with the Memorial Hospital.
Yeah, no, I like the way this is cleaned up.
Placed on its own lot, so this does clean it up.
Yeah, no, I like the way it's cleaned up, I was just curious where those lines run.
Would the underlying subdivision ultimately be vacated?
With this subdivision proposal, yes, it would be.
Sounds good. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Well, with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynn, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, thank you. Ordinance 2507, Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2507 is an ordinance approving and authorizing a zone change for property in the city of Evanston from industrial established, i.e., to highway business established, HBE, as requested by Tracy Laycock, Wyoming Downs LLC, of the land more particularly described in the resolution. This address has, or excuse me, this property, Mayor, has partial addresses of 27 and 29 Allegiance Circle.
Mr. Jacobson, thank you.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is located just south of Wasatch Drive, east of Allegiance Circle, it's west of Harrison Drive, north of the interstate. Land uses, adjacent land uses include industrial uses to the west, there are some commercial uses, a mix of commercial uses and residential uses located north across Wasatch Road. Some of those properties have not been developed. We recently approved a zone change for some of that property for high density and medium density residential land uses to the north. Properties to the east of these lots are zoned, there is one lot zoned highway business, and there is another lot next to, adjacent to, lot 20, that's zoned industrial established. So this subdivision, or, it's not subdivision, not yet, eventually it will be, but, so what the zone change proposes is to take lot 22, 20, and 19 shown, and change zoning from industrial established, which it currently is, and go to the zoning map. So from industrial established in that area to highway business established zoning district. Go back and talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan on third and final reading, there'll be a resolution to adjust, if the zone change is approved, to adjust the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan anticipated land use, future land use of lot 22 as highway business adjacent to Wasatch Drive, and lots 19 and 20 showing in the gray shaded areas within the red boundary as industrial established zoning or land use. So what is proposed is that entire part to expand the highway business district a little bit further into the industrial park area. It does reduce the lots within the industrial, or land area within the industrial zoned area by about 44% within the Evanston Industrial Center subdivision. That's the area that's south of Wasatch Road, or Wasatch Drive, north of the interstate, and to the city limits, and basically from this property to the west. So lot 19 is about 6.06 acres in size, lot 20 is 7.13 acres in size, lot 22 is 5.32 acres, for a total of 18.51 acres. Undeveloped lots within the Evanston Industrial Center, and that totals about 29.92 acres. The removal of these lots from, at least lots 19 and 20, from the industrial land use area, or zoning land use, would decrease the land area within the industrial part by about 44%. So it's roughly about half of what's remaining in that industrial area that's being proposed for the highway business zoning. So the Evanston 2010 plan addressed the projected development of lot 19, 20, and I'll just read this real quickly. Industrial established land uses include processing, storage, and manufacturing, and some commercial uses. The plan notes that this industrial area is projected to expand southwest along Wasatch Drive. Expansion is defined by the Union Pacific Railroad right of way in Yellow Creek. The plan also notes that industrial expansion may occur adjacent to Airport Road, but should not develop within the floodplain of Yellow Creek. The floodplain of Yellow Creek should remain as natural open space, that's area that's further to the west and off of this map. Lot 22, within the highway business, that purple shaded area on this map, is shown as highway business, land use. Highway business area serves the traveling public as well as residents, and are oriented to vehicular traffic and service. The Wasatch Drive commercial area extends west from the intersection of Wasatch Drive and Harrison Drive, and includes property north and south of Wasatch Drive to the intersection with Allegiance Circle. Commercial development west of this intersection is limited to the north side of Wasatch Drive. The plan states that the north side of Wasatch Drive serves as a transitional area to the adjacent Centennial Valley and Porter Residential subdivisions. Commercial uses within this area will serve, service the needs of residential neighborhoods in the industrial area to the west and travelers. So amending the 2010 comprehensive plan for lots 19 and 20, block two, the Evanston Industrial Center, second edition, from industrial established to highway business is inconsistent with the plan. Amending the 20 comprehensive plan, 2010 comprehensive plan for lot 22, block two of the Evanston Industrial Center, second edition, is consistent with the 2010 plan. So obviously, a rezone of the property, you're going to have an expansion of the highway business district. You'll have that infill lot on lot 22 that has frontage off of Wasatch Road. So a change in zoning of these lots will expand upon the existing highway business zoning districts, decrease land area presently available in the industrial development, and create an industrial zoned island located east of lot 20, which is that gray shade just to the right of that red highlighted area. Land use compatibility between adjacent properties is a consideration with this request. I have attached, attached a schedule of permitted land uses, and that and the purpose of the request for a zone change is to allow a, an off-track bedding facility currently in the industrial established zone, it's not a permitted land use in the highway business zoning district, it would be a conditionally permitted land use. So if the zone change is approved, they would next look at a conditional use permit application and, and a public hearing before the planning commission. There is a site plan that was submitted, conceptual site, site plan, I believe. Michael? I, would you like to kinda describe what's proposed for the property? Just some, some fun graphics. Staff hasn't gone through the conceptual plan yet, we'll be doing that upcoming, and providing comments on that, but this is what's being considered at the moment. And I've got some additional building plans here, you can just pour it through.
Okay. If you've got all the slides in here, I may not go through the whole, there's a pretty long presentation in there, but, thank you, Dwayne, good evening, Your Honor, and fellow members of council. My name's Michael Brown, and I'm with Imberg Miller Engineers, I'm on, I'm here on behalf of Wyoming Downs. So what they're proposing, and what's, I guess what's shown on there is the three lots that are proposed for the rezone from the industrial land use to the highway business land use. And what you're seeing there is about a 60,000 square foot facility that's been deemed, I guess, an indoor amusement establishment by, by city, I guess by city code, which is going to be the off-track bedding facility for Wyoming Downs. They need about 16 acres to include their building and their, and their parking area. The three lots themselves comprise of about 18 acres total. So the gray area is a rather large parking lot. The site itself slopes maybe six to eight percent from, from what you're seeing there on the screen about left to right, which is a fairly gentle slope. There'll be some cut areas on the right side of the facility, and some of that earthwork we used to fill in the areas on the, on the lower side or the left side of that facility. All in all, they like, they like to see the facilities fairly flat. Their demographic is women over the age of 45 and men over the age of 60. Their draw hopefully is gonna be people from Utah to use this facility, so lots of parking, which I think they're very amenable to having excess parking in wintertime conditions when the interstate closes, which we all know it does from time to time, so truckers and then traffic from the highway are more than welcome to use their parking lot, and they would, they would love to have them in their facility, obviously, too, during winter months, so. Maybe the next slide, this is, this is, you're gonna have to really squint at this, but there's a restaurant proposed within the facility, there's about 500 slot, slot locations within the facility, and then a bar within that facility. Sorry, sorry. So if I, if I could repeat myself, they, so the, what you're looking at is a floor plan there of the facility, and again roughly about 60,000 square feet, comprising about 500 slot locations or gaming, gaming locations, the, I guess the, kind of the semicircle location right in the middle, that's the bar facility, and then there's a restaurant portion of the facility located in there as well. Yes, I'm Michael Brown, and I'm with, Michael, M.I.C.H.A.E.L., Brown, just like the color. Okay, sure, no problem. So that, I can go through these maybe rather quickly, but these are some renderings of what the proposed facility is expected to look like. This is a, this is an elevation view, looking, looking at the main entrance going into the facility. Again, another, another rendering, looking at the main entrance entering into the facility. Same with that one. Same with that one. This is, look, I guess, being inside the facility, looking at some of the gaming, the gaming chairs, gaming locations. This is the, this is the bar located inside the facility. Again, more, just more renderings of, of the different location, the different gaming locations within the facility. If you want me to stop so you can take a better look, I can certainly do that.
You're doing fine.
These should be, all be part of your packet as well, too, I believe. Again, looking at the, the bar inside the facility, and kind of a zoomed out view of some of the gaming locations in the bar. Oh, you've got one more here. Any questions?
I don't think, anything else, Dwayne?
Yeah, I'll just finish off the recommendation, so on November 3rd, the planning commission held a public hearing to review the proposed changes to the Evanston zoning map and the comprehensive plan. The applicant presented the request, there was nobody present at the public hearing to speak in favor of or in opposition to the application. Having considered the staff report and testimony offered at the public hearing, the planning commission found the proposed changes to the zone, zoning map and comprehensive plan to be compatible with surrounding land uses, and unanimously voted to forward a positive recommendation of approval. I would also add, as we went through the public hearing process and up to date, we have not had anyone come into our office either opposed or in favor of, of the application. So it's been pretty quiet on this one.
Excellent, okay, thank you. Get this on the table so we can discuss it, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2507 on first reading, or I guess we need a sponsor? Sponsor, somebody wishes...
I'll sponsor.
Sponsored by Counselor Schmidt.
Oh, Schmidt, you already done that, okay. Thank you, I missed that, so now we've got a sponsor now, I'll entertain a motion to approve 2507, ordinance 2507 on first reading.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lynn, with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Lynn, seconding. Discussion?
I got one question, Mr. Jacobson.
Yes.
I understand why we're moving this to highway development, I understand, or highway business. Are they gonna come back later and adjust the lot lines, or are we gonna have the same thing as we did with the Memorial Hospital, have lot lines going through the middle of the building?
No, as part of this review process, it will include a minor subdivision combining the three lots.
I assumed that, but I hadn't heard that, and I couldn't find it, so.
Yeah, so there's, there'll be additional review.
We're just dealing with the lots as they sit now, and then, is that right? We're just sitting, dealing with the lots as they exist now, and then a subdivision will come down the road that will, that will alter those lots, similar fashion that we've already done tonight, that kind of thing.
Question, is the, the access to this business gonna be off Wasatch Drive? Question, is the, the access to this business going to be off Wasatch Drive? Is that what I see in the?
Access for the property will actually be both on Wasatch Drive. Now, that is a state-controlled road, so approval will come through the state.
So it goes down to?
We, we've had already some comments come in from YDOT for the access approach. They would like to see it kind of align more with Constitution Avenue. And as you see on the site plan, there would also be access off of Allegiance Circle.
And there, I believe there's a meeting on the 20th and 21st, a hearing, is that correct, for, on this proposal?
On, on this proposal, they are working through a, a site, a, a site plan that will be presented to the engineering and planning department.
The gaming commission that's going, is having the meeting on the 20th and 21st?
Uh, yeah, that would be between the applicant and, and the Wyoming Gaming Commission.
So it'll be open to the public to be able to make comment, then?
Mr., I think Mr. Harris has
Counselor Schmidt, if I can answer that. You are correct. The, the hearing on the 20th and 21st is for the gaming commission, which is to consider their application for the permit for the facility.
Will that be held here?
No, I think it's in Cheyenne, but I think you can appear virtually. I would suggest you go to the gaming commission website, or anybody, go to the gaming commission website and see what the, because I think you can register to appear and provide comment via web. It's either in Casper or Cheyenne, that's what I recall, but.
The, the only comment I have is I, the impact that this facility where it's going to be located, and we discussed this earlier, on the new, when we, when we did the proposal or the, um, approval for the housing subdivisions, population, population and the traffic on that, on Wasatch, that's still a, that's still a concern of mine when we talked about that, about the new proposals that we passed for, for more homes to be built across, I believe, right across the highway from, from this facility. So I just want to voice, I, I still have a concern about the traffic and about this facility being close to residential area.
So that entrance off Wasatch, they're basically just wanting to move it east, is what YDOT was saying? You said YDOT wants to possibly align that with Constitution? That entrance coming off Wasatch, they just want to move that east? Yeah, okay, that's what I, that's what you were saying? Okay.
Any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved on first reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
Departments. Mr. Newsom, you have anything for us tonight, sir? Excellent, thank you. Who else is back there? I can't see. Mr. O'Neil, you're there, Department Heads. Anything tonight, sir?
Just congratulations to the Mount New
Excellent, good reminder. Absolutely, super cool, yep. Chief Finesse?
Yes, Your Honor. Last Thursday, local law enforcement department did a guns and poses game with the local Special Olympics, and fortunately we lost, but apparently it came out, I don't think, in support. I think it was Councilmember Clark's daughter that won the 500 Jurassic, is that correct?
I'm not sure.
She didn't share it with you, huh?
She donated the full amount back to the Special Olympics, I thought it was really cool, so thank you.
Nice, excellent, very nice.
Oh, you're talking Heather?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I haven't talked to her, I've been working, so.
Well, she did a really awesome thing.
Larson, I won't, I won't miss you tonight. I missed you at the last meeting. I overlooked you, and I apologize, but I, I Hey, you got to sit in this, it's like church, you got to sit in the same spot all the time. Do you have anything for us, Mr. Newsom? Mr. Robinson?
Just a point of clarification on the landfill question. That $95,000 was two months' worth. It was September and October bills together. So we normally average between 40 and 50,000 a month. Those fees are collected in utility bills, so just a point of clarification that that was two months' worth.
Thank you so much for that. Appreciate that.
Ms. Harris?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Harris?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Public participation is, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, at the November 4th meeting, I, I believe Kathy had a question regarding affordable housing, if there's any projects being considered. And I have had a couple of developers contact the city, our office, about two years ago, and again this year. They are looking to apply for tax credits for low-income housing. They, one of the developers recently did a project in Cheyenne. They would like to do another project in Evanston. They did apply for tax credits. They did not receive them. They said they're extremely competitive to get those. So as soon as they're able to get that, you'll likely see another low-income housing development proposal in Evanston. Also, with the existing chief Waseke Apartments, there's another developer that is, I believe, picked up that property. They are looking to do the same, obtain tax credits where they can rehab the building, the site, and, and bring that up to, to date, so.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there are some
I just have
Things.
one clarification, so that we don't get bombarded with questions. Those tax credits are not from the city.
They are not from the city.
Because we're incapable of doing that, so.
Yeah.
Clarification. Thank you. Good information, thank you, thank you. Public participation, is anyone here from the public that would like to address the council?
Thank you, thank you, Dwayne, for clarifying that. Kathy Cook, 912 Maine. I just had a question for Dwayne on the old hospital and the senior citizen place. So who owns that now?
County owns it now.
Okay, and so you in a county selling off four lots?
They are not selling off four lots, they're proposing a two lots of subdivision.
So you're going to tear down some of the buildings, or all of, except for the senior citizen?
There hasn't been a proposal to tear down any buildings. It'll just place
Oh, it'll just
on each lot.
Okay.
The former, former Memorial Hospital will be on the lot, the senior center will be on another lot.
But, okay, so then it's just going to stay the way it is, it's just going to fix the lots better?
Yeah, that's right, that's, it'll just lock down the rest.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and I think we need a dog park.
Yeah, well. Anyone else? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Lynn, seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Where are the adjournments? Hey, Jesse, hang on one second, will you? Before you go, I got a question for you. Can you hang on a second? I got a question for you. Does that work?